Okay, we're gonna get started. Tina, please conduct a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio, Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mrs. David.
Here.
Mrs. D Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Frank. Ms. Greenstein.
Here.
Mrs. Hayman.
Here.
Mr. Stoloff. Mrs. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent. Student Board Representatives. Ally Meltzer.
Here.
Joel Bierdeman.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 4th, 2019 Public Meeting of the Wissahicken School District's Board of Directors. And for once, we did not actually answer this meeting in the executive session. With that, I'll move on to item number two on our agenda, which is a list of meetings over the past week. And I'll provide a brief update of the MCIU meeting later in our agenda. Moving on to item three, upcoming meetings. Item three is a list of a whole slate of meetings over the next month. And three of them I want to call out specifically. And those are the ones related to K-5 capacity planning. And they will be held at different locations around the district. On March 11th, we'll have one in the High School Audion, March 20th in Tony Creek, and March 21st at Blue Bell. I know that's been sort of a hot topic amongst our school community. So I would encourage anyone and everyone to try to make it to one or more of those meetings to hear more in-depth discussions about the works with our five-capacity. And next up then, we have presentations. Got our monthly Wissahicken High School update from our student board reps. So Ally or Joel?
Thank you. So the first item is the La La Land Semi Formal that we hosted earlier in February. And the annual Semi Formal was hosted on February 9th, and 670 students attended the La La Land themed event. Students from the Junior Class Committee and the National Art Honor Society, along with parent volunteers, worked on transforming the square gym into kind of a scene based from the movie. And something interesting about it is that a jazz band composed of student performers and musicians from the school kicked off the night by performing live. And personally, I attended the event and had a really good time there. So that was a highlight. And also, Whist Link, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. Or if we're not, this year, Whist is implementing a new program called Whist Link. And this is a branch of a much bigger program known as Link Crew. And a bunch of different high schools around the nation are starting to implement this. And what it is, is a student leadership program in order to cease feelings of hopelessness and increase feelings of comfort and excitement when it comes to incoming freshmen entering high school. And studies demonstrate that if a student has a positive experience with their first year of high school, their chances for success increase dramatically. And by restructuring the ninth-grade orientation at Wissahicken as a safe and exciting environment through the use of student-led activities as opposed to intimidating PowerPoints, explaining how to read your schedule, Whist Link hopes to welcome freshmen and make them know that they are integrated into the Wissahicken community. And two to three students or Link Crew members will be able to attend freshman homerooms regularly to answer questions and provide tips on how to survive socially and academically. So that's a really exciting way to restructure ninth-grade orientation in the coming year. And the other thing is an invite to the Fab Lab Open House. And the Fabrication Laboratory Fab Lab is a new Wissahicken learning space that opened in October of 2018, which encourages a lot of collaboration, design, and building innovative solutions using leadership and manufacturing tools. And it fills with a lot of computer engineering and manufacturing. And students are really taking advantage of this in new engineering electives and just all throughout school and in robotics. Exciting.
Great. Okay, so moving on, again, like we did last summer, Wissahicken High School is offering some new summer opportunities for students to get involved in over the break. So these things can include remediation as well as enrichment in areas like language arts, social studies, math, and science. I personally attended one of these last year to help me get started on the college essay-writing process, where I bounced off a lot of my ideas with fellow classmates. Just early in that college admissions process, it's important to nail down your topics and your focus for your college admission essay. As well as, we're offering prep courses for ACT and SAT, which can get kids who aren't doing that supplementally to get involved in prepping for the SAT. Recently, we held the Safe to Say Assembly in each homeroom where we educated. We did a presentation that was aimed at educating students about how to identify and report signs of struggling students who may be showing violent tendencies or struggling with depression or social issues. So we learned how to use the app, a brand-new app. It's very easy to use. And how to report that to the school and let the administration know in an anonymous way if people are uncomfortable with reporting that directly. So I think it's a very important step that we have to take in with the social media age and kids using that a lot. I think we have to be educated on knowing how to spot these signs because they can turn into bigger issues if we don't address them. Recently, on Valentine's Day, we, each homeroom, created personalized messages and cards to send to another homeroom. My homeroom went above and beyond, and we created a minion from the Despicable Me movie card and sent it to the TV club. And they reciprocated the love by sending a bag full of candy and as well as a personal message to each one of us. So that was a nice thing to brighten up our day. I'm sure the rest of the school felt that as well. Sports, just some highlights. The club Wissahicken hockey team just won the suburban high school hockey league championship the other day. And we scored 16 goals, which is incredible. They're also moved on to the Flyers Cup Tournament, and they're playing in that this week. Secondly, the wrestling team won the SOL American Conference Championship, which is a huge accomplishment for them. They had a great season. And the girls' basketball team also ended their five-year playoff drought by making the district playoffs recently.
Wow.
That's awesome.
Good update, guys.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question? When, what was the general reaction to the Safe to Say program? And when you were doing the presentations?
Obviously, it was kind of a statewide-regulated presentation that they were giving us. And it wasn't necessarily catered to with students, but a lot of people in my homeroom, we talked about it. And we kind of talked about how it was very important that both on a statewide level and a local level, schools have really been enforcing the ideas of coming to them with concerns about safety instead of just brushing off. And in terms of regulating this through social media, it seemed, they gave very good examples on how to spot it on social media, not just in person. And that was definitely really helpful. Bringing awareness to and how to actually combat issues of any type of school violence.
Yeah, I would say that the reaction was generally very positive. And I thought the presentation that was given was really thorough, and it was updated and dynamic. And we learned, I honestly took away a bunch of things on how to spot these things on social media. At the same time, though, I agree that's a very good idea, and it's a great step that we should be taking to educate the students about how to spot this. But it's sad on a deeper level, like we have to, you know, we are the ones responsible. Like, the high school students were the last line of defense in protecting from these things. And it's troubling on a deeper level, but I think it's a step that we have to take to educate and adapt to what's going on.
I had a question about the Whist Link program. So this is a new program to help eighth graders with the transition to ninth grade. And it's primarily student-driven, or students are heavily involved. How did the program come about? Was it something that the students brought to administration, or administration came up with the idea, or how did it come to be?
I'm not entirely sure, but I know that there are four teachers who are leading the program very strongly. And I think that it was actually brought about as kind of based off of, Sauterton High School did a similar program. And I think some of the teachers saw that there, because their administrators wanted to, and decided that it would be a very effective thing to implement in Wissahicken. So this year, they went about kind of selecting students that they thought would be good for the program and inviting them actually. And it seems like it's been very effective so far, and I'm excited to see how it goes next year. My sister's going to be an incoming freshman, so I'm sure I'll hear about it.
Yeah, it sounds like a great idea. And Joel, you had mentioned summer courses that the high school offers. The college essay-writing as well as SAT and ACT prep. Are these courses offered to our students for free, or is there a fee taking these courses?
I don't have the information about the fees, but when I did the prep course over the summer, there was no fee. And I'm pretty confident that there's free to students to participate in.
Yeah, that's correct. Great. Any other questions for our student board reps?
I just had one comment. I believe right before we came here, I got a voicemail for the Whist Link, or they're having a fundraiser tomorrow at Chipotle or something to introduce students to what it is and what it's about and like an informational thing, but they're also having a fundraiser for Chipotle. Is that tomorrow?
Yeah, that is tomorrow. They are having a sign and donate, and I think they're gonna talk about.
What place is that?
Bell.
Blue Bell, okay.
Yeah.
Great. All right, thanks, Ally and Joel. Next is our public comment, the first of two public comment periods on our agenda. And this one is for comments on agenda items only. And we have one speaker registered for one of our agenda items. That is Armina Taylor. This is with regards to item 15H6, which is the memorial sculpture. And instructions for speakers are included in the agenda, and please limit your comments to.
I want to be very clear that my comments tonight are completely in the realm of being a Wissahicken alum. So I'm gonna read a definition of something, and then I'm gonna start with my comments. I want to read the definition for, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you. I want to read the definition for discrimination. The dictionary definition for discrimination is the unjust or prejudiced treatment of different categories of people or things, especially on grounds of race, age, sex. Synonyms for discrimination are prejudice, bias, bigotry, inequity, favoritism, one-sidedness, and partisanship. I wasn't here last week, but I received phone calls about your discussion about the sculpture. And one of the things that I thought was just amazing is that I sent an email to all of you on January 7th with very explicit details of the proposal. And I mentioned the policy 918 at the time because when I was doing this, I thought that a memorial sculpture was relevant to the memorial policy. Wade eventually made me do policy 702, which is a different process and a procedure. In my mind, it wasn't really always supposed to be a donation. It was just something that was accompanying our reunion. So I want to go back to discrimination. When I looked at the board meeting, January 14th, Joe, in particular, you allowed Christine De Laurentis to speak up here for eight minutes, and you allowed me to speak for three minutes. And that is not the first or second time that you've done that. So if I go over three minutes because of the discussion that I wasn't a part of last week, I think that would be unfair because I think we need to really realize what has happened here. And so what's really important here is that I came here with the full scope and full heart to bring something together related to my reunion. And I heard Debbie that you had mentioned, what if everybody comes and asks for another memorial? Floods of memorials. Ten years ago this year, Betsy Cornish sat right there and said, "Well, if Carmina wants to have the Audion named after Principal Vanderwater, we'll get floods and floods of requests for something to be named after someone in the school." In 10 years, not one alumni class has asked this school district to name anything. This, I've been working on this proposal and the package for our 30th reunion for one complete year. I started submitting facility requests for this package January 3rd, 2018. It's March 2019. I have been to four school board meetings in the last two, two and a half, three months. I gave a full, earnest detail. I wish you would look at the email again, which is confusing. I sent six attachments to a simple proposal. And the proposal that's written here is not the proposal that I emailed you. Because the second half of all this blank page is a picture of where it was proposed to be, the relevant policy numbers that it was supposed to be, and my contact information. That's not what I proposed, what's in this document. I don't know how wide and big the art room courtyard is, but this sculpture wouldn't impede on anything related to what the students are doing. I even sent a picture of the door that says that students aren't allowed in there. I worked with Wade to find the best place that would be less intrusive by students. The seniors don't eat there. If the art class brings things out to dry, a sculpture there is not going to impede it. I just want you guys to know, like this, it just doesn't feel right. This is discriminatory because I think it's personal. I have personal feelings about all of you. But this isn't about how I feel about all of you. I'm representing a class. And Joe, you know, to be cut off, I gave you a list of 78 classmates that said I could speak on their behalf, and you ignored it. Regardless of their hair, 78 people that belonged to the class of 89 said they gave me authorization to speak on their behalf beyond three minutes, and you ignored that. Seventy-eight classmates. That's the length that I had to go through to get extra three minutes. But in two meetings that Christine De Laurentis spoke before me, you gave her eight minutes to speak on one subject. These are things that happened. What I submitted to you happened. I submitted emails on January 17th, 19th, 24th, and the 29th. And I did not receive response, well, I received response from the superintendent. I'm not here to be adversarial. I came with a full heart, with a decent proposal that was relevant to a policy. I initially did not indicate that it was policy 702. It was not about being a donation to the school. But what is interesting is you guys did not read my proposal. That was only four paragraphs initially to say that I was bringing up policy 918 from the beginning. And when I came back a second time, I looked at all of you and I asked you, did you have any questions? Then it was a whole nother week or so since I sent you the first email. And none of you said anything to me. But I'm not here last week. And there's a big discussion, and I can't respond to your questions. That's unfair. When I brought the family of these people that are gonna be memorialized here in December, came back twice in January, and then I would have to come back in February and in March? Nobody redirected, none of you, nine board members redirected me to another policy. We're at 702 because Wade chose 702, not Carmina. If you look at your email on January 7th, I proposed policy 918. And I gave you a copy of the policy among the six attachments. And you've been rude to me, and you have cut me off. And I know that I have come here before, and I have talked about other subjects, and I've been passionate about other subjects. But this is something separate. I don't see a relationship with the school district and alumni of the school system. There isn't a relationship. And I can tell you, there aren't gonna be floods and floods of classes coming back to have a sculpture. Most class reunions, they want to go to a tavern and drink all night. I elevated the bar of what we do for our class reunions. No one has come up with anything similar to what I have done. And I want to repeat again, 10 years ago, I came here through a committee process and then a board process to ask for the Audion to be named after Henry Vanderwater. And 10 years later, there is not another building in the high school named after another administrator. There's nothing in this school district named after anybody else.
Armina, it's been nine minutes now. Can you please wrap up your comments?
I don't know how this vote's gonna go out. I don't know if I'm allowed to speak before you vote. But the reality is, I am willing to compromise. I am willing to do whatever it takes to have the wishes of my classmates to have this. I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I went to the type, the cement, the weight of the thing. I've taken care of all of that in this. And I think you should respectfully look at all the overtures I have made in peace, in the spirit of an alumni. And that's exactly what this sculpture represents, the Trojan spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, it's not typical that we as board members engage with speakers at the podium, but in this instance, I think I'd have to make a few comments. I disagree with a number of things that were said at the podium. But rather than having a back-and-forth, I will say a couple of things. One is that sending the board information is different than the board being convinced by the information. So those are two different things. Policy matters are determined by the administration of the board, like what relevant policies are at play, not the person making the request. The topic that we're gonna be voting on later today is in fact framed as a donation. So it's governed by policy 702, which is donations and gifts to the district. And when we come up to that item on the agenda, we can have a little bit more discussion about that voting item, and then we can see if we're gonna move forward to a vote.
And if I could just add, I mean, based on, hopefully, and I think the community understands this, based on sunshine law, we can't discuss topics with anyone via email. That's just not how the board handles things, nor can we discuss things in private among ourselves. So last week, there was, on the work agenda, discussion about that specific topic. So it was a published, publicized part of the agenda, which is why we discussed it last week as part of the work agenda. So I just wanted to clarify this, two points, Joe, thank you.
Thank you. And next on our agenda is the report of the board president. I don't have any informational items, but I do have one voting item that we touched on briefly last week, and it's the board calendar with dates of our board meetings for the next school year. And I know that last week Debbie had mentioned or asked us if we could consider an earlier start time of 7:00 PM for those meetings as opposed to 7:30 as the way it's listed on the sheet. I think for tonight, what I would ask is that we vote on the schedule, just to lock in dates, and then we can have maybe a separate sidebar discussion and poll more board members about whether 7:00 PM is an acceptable time. I know for me personally that a seven o'clock shift would be difficult for me just because of work commitments to get here consistently, considering that we typically have executive session. But I'm willing to have a further discussion, get here for more board members. But that's something we can amend to the actual schedule down the road. But for tonight, when we vote on it, we're essentially gonna be voting on locking of the dates for next school week. Next, we have the report of the superintendent, Jim.
Thank you. Yes, two items tonight. This is actually a sneak preview of a message that will come out from me to the entire district, all families tomorrow, on two entirely separate items. Both of which are actually on people's minds, though. The first of which is the K-5 capacity conversation that's ongoing. And it is ongoing, it's not gonna get resolved today or the next day. But what I do want to make clear that is resolved is there will be no redistricting of students, any students, in September of 2019. So that was brought up, that was some good input, some good feedback from members of the public that if we were still considering that, they would like to know sooner rather than later, so they can make some plans. And actually, we're not considering that. There will most likely be some redistricting later in out-years, but not September 2019. The second thing is, every now and then, there's a weather situation that calls for a decision to be made about school, whether it be closing school or delaying the opening. And I want everyone to know that we are extremely appreciative of the value of making that decision the night before. I'm very attuned to the dislocations it creates in households when you have to make some alternate plans. I'm here to tell you that for every time we do have a delayed opening and call it and make that decision, no matter when we make the decision, there's lots of people who are jumping up and down and congratulating us and thanking us.
Kids.
And Mr. Antonio's kids. And then, there are a large number of people, not normally kids, who object to the decision because it creates such a conflict that they're housed for childcare and supervision and so forth. So anyway, the point is that we're gonna continue to make these decisions on the same criteria that we always have. But we are going to try, when possible, to make them the night before. But the problem, there's a lot of pitfalls with that. One of which is if you have to change your decision, the confusion that gets created is rather really impactful, to say the least. And then also, if you make that decision at 8:00 PM, and then all of a sudden, something happens. Remember this huge, massive snowstorm we were supposed to get last night? And the streets are bare now? So what if we went on that and decided to close schools? And that would be just another day in June, and then we'd have a disproportionate number of people feeling one way about that decision, and I can tell you what that would be. So anyway, yes, we hear you about wanting the decision the night before, if possible. But please understand that there is just a lot of ingredients to go into this slow cooker before we make a decision.
I just wanted to ask a question. I know we've had a number of delays and days off. Has that pushed the last day of school off?
The delays do not affect the last day in June. Our, to date, two snow days also do not since we built in two. But we only built in two, so.
And I just wanted to bring up, and I know when Jim was talking about it, and I know when I was an elementary school parent, I didn't think of it. But one of the things that you have to think of, and one of the things that Dr. Chrisfield considers, is we have 16, 17, and 18-year-old students driving to school every day. So he does take that into consideration when he's making some of these decisions. I know as a parent, a child who will be driving very shortly, and I'm sure Joel and probably Ally are driving, it's something that, as a parent, we worry about when there's snow out there. The kids don't know how to drive in the snow yet. So just remember that when you are an elementary school parent, thinking, why are they opening the school late, or why is the school closed? Think of your child, eight years from now, driving down the street, and you're wary of that moment.
Thank you. Moving on now to the report of the Assistant Superintendent, Gary.
Just a couple items. One, I just wanted to, in the topic of weather, just wanted to compliment our Buildings and Grounds crew and also our bus-driving team for really good work on the past snow events that we've had. Have done a really nice job of doing what they needed to do to make sure our students arrive safely for a day of learning. And also want to just point out that at the end of this month, our Parent-Teacher Spring Conference Session takes place on the 27th, 28th, and 29th of March. So the year is moving along, and time to sort of wrap up progress on the year and talk with parents about all the good things that have taken place and things we're gonna continue to work on. Thank you.
Okay. Report of the solicitor, Bill.
Thank you. No new items.
Board Secretary Wade, anything new since last week?
Nope, there are four sets of minutes, and they have not changed.
The board treasurer report?
No change. It's a acceptance and minuting of the January report.
You. Board committee reports, Ronnie, anything new since last week?
No, I have no informational items and no voting items under communication.
Okay. Curriculum and technology, Ron, I saw one new item since last week.
Yes, there is one new item pertaining to a, another tuition contract. So I would like that added to the list. That will be document G-15.
14? Oh, document.
Oh, that's, you're right.
I'm here, right, document G-15.
Item G-15.
But it's item G-14. Make it super confusing. Gary, is anything you want to add about that item?
Uh, two of them are tripped. A number of them are special education contracts where we're outsourcing the, the student support, and a large number of them are technology being purchased via the E-rate.
I'm sorry, Ron, I was specifically talking about the new one that was added, tuition contract.
Yes, I can clarify that one. So at the time of contract generation for particular services to be provided in an institution, in this case Bucks County Intermediate Unit, there are certain services that are not included in that initial contract approval that the board approved in the past. Those are related services, and sometimes those services can't be predicted in advance because they involve meetings with the family, and the number of meetings that are held, the number of, the length of those meetings, and the services that the child may need that may change even during the year, end up, will end up costing more than we originally had approved. So this is an example of a contract that we had approved. It was an outplace student on the August list that you had received in August 2018, and the services for the youngster, or the youngsters, are higher than the original contract amount. So we're putting in the difference here between the original approval and what we anticipate it will cost to pay the bill.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we're moving on then to facilities and transportation. Tracy?
Thank you. There are no informational items, and there is nothing new on the voting items. This is where the sculpture is.
I would just, in terms of that, given some of the controversy around it, and given that we have a policy meeting coming up next week, where I think it would behoove us to review the two policies in question prior to making a final decision regarding the sculpture. So I don't know if that's possible, if we can table this, ending that policy review.
Yeah, I'm gonna, when we get to the voting portion, I'll pull this item out, 15H6 separate, so we can vote on that as a standalone item. At that time, Debbie, you want to make a motion, table it, and then second, all that. My, my personal preference is, given I think of the timing that we want, in terms of whether or not the sculpture's gonna happen or not, and there are 33 union activities in, I think, June, that for that reason, I would, I would recommend us having an up and down vote, just so they know that there's some certainty, yes or no. Play with then further. But it doesn't mean that we can't do have an up and down, up or down vote on this item that we can't or that we couldn't, build review policy for ambiguity that we. But again, when it comes up to that motion. Now, Tracy?
So that is all for.
Okay. Finance committee, David, any changes since last week?
Well, I have an informational item, which is not a change, but just to point out that we will be having a budget workshop meeting March 18th at 6:30. That's not new. There are no new or changed items from our work session last week.
Okay. And as normal, I will pull out item 15I5, which is the list of, put on that separately. Okay, policy, Harold, last week?
No, nothing new, but I just want to point out that Monday, next, next Monday, the 11th, we are having a policy meeting here in this room at 5:30, and we will be finished in time to go to the high school audio on for the K-5 capacity meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Report of the personnel director, Kathy, highlight the changes from last week?
Yes, there are no new informational items. Any of the new items that I added are bolded on the K-1 listing, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. Report of board representatives, there was only one meeting since last week. Oh, you have a question? Okay, sorry. Was that Tracy?
There are always.
Mr. Omahundra?
Best ever in the world.
Yeah. Okay. Report of board representatives, we've only had one meeting since last week, and that was the MC IU board meeting.
We also had the legislative meeting. It was online.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Good.
Okay. I'll give a quick update at the board of directors meeting, then you guys can give us some legislative updates. So at the MC IU board of directors meeting, there were some legislative items, which I think Ron or Pat go over, but the one noteworthy thing that we voted on and approved was contract approval, approval with their teachers' union, which had elements that I think will be useful for us as we go into our associations with our own. That is an executive session kind of item that, for the discussion. So on then to the MC IU legislative.
Yeah, Ron and I attended that meeting by phone. It was a Zoom. I don't know what that means, but we all showed up by phone or in person on our, our laptops. There were a variety of things that were mentioned. Ron had some very good questions.
But I being retired and having no life, able to attend by phone. And there were several items in there of interest, one of which doesn't so much affect us, was that the governor Wolf proposed a $45,000 starting salary for all teachers in Pennsylvania. But in the, the smaller, poorer districts in mid-state, there has been a great deal of, they say, pushback against that. Then for reimbursement that we've, for construction, the, the fund has been bare for, for I don't know how many years, and the general feeling is, do not expect ever the fund to be replenished. So if you have in your, your heart, starry eyes of the state helping us with our, with a new high school or any other enlargements of our buildings, it's not going to happen. As far as, probably not going to happen. As far as bills on cyber schools, there is one that has been proposed, and that is, if the, if a district had its, has its own cyber school, and parents decide to send their children to another, if there's any difference in the cost of that cyber school, it is on, the parents are responsible for the payment. That, oh yes, and if you saw in the paper, an item where Wissickin School District was listed as getting a considerable increase in funding for next year, general feeling was, don't bet on it. So we're on our own for, for our budget. And that was pretty much the gist of the meeting.
That was the gist of the meeting. The only thing I would add to that is April 29th is the meeting, or the time when we can go out to see our legislators in Harrisburg, and I will be going out to meet with our legislators.
A couple of comments about the, the cyber charter school bill. So one good thing for us as a, as a district is that this fall, we're going to be opening our own Wissickin Virtual Academy, that we're calling it, which is in essence, a cyber high school option for our students. So if that bill does come to pass, we'll be ahead of the game, because we will have our own cyber option. And just as, as a way, for context, we have a neighborhood of 20, 25 students from our district who go to cyber charters now, and that is the, our impact of charter schools in our district rate compared to most districts across the state. And that costs us in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000 tuition that we pay to those cyber charter schools each year. So obviously, with our own cyber option, more kids that we can have going that option house, that's less cyber tuition we have to provide, and if this bill comes to pass, then anyone who goes outside, go to an outside charter option.
Right. And the interesting point about that is, Erzai, the Republican Majority Leader in the State Senate, I believe, is the one who is very much for this bill. So there's a chance.
Thanks, Pat and Ron. Now we're moving on to board voting items. Oh, North Monco, there wasn't a meeting in, yeah. Okay, so now we're moving on to the board voting items. So other than 15H6, which is the memorial statue, and 15I5, the list of payments, are there any other items that I should pull out or separate vote? No? Okay. So then can I have a motion for approval of items 15A through 15K, with the exception of 15H6, 15I5?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. Now we're moving on to item 15H6, the memorial statue item. Can I have a motion to approve item 15H6?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments?
If I could, I guess, reiterate a couple of things. One is, you know, the concerns that were raised last week had to do with policy, and whether or not there is any precedent for this type of memorial gift, or whatever you want to call it. And it was our understanding as a board that, no, there's not really a precedent for this. And so the decision was made to make sure that we review those policies prior to making a decision, which, you know, we want to be fair to everyone. And so to me, again, I would move that we, we table making a decision for this evening so that we can do a full review of the two policies next Monday.
Yeah, and I, I think reflecting on the discussion that we had last week about the memorial statue, in my view, the discussion was not based on like personal considerations, was really more about policy and precedent. So what policy governs this, and it's really framed as a donation to the school district to put this installation, which is a memorial piece of artwork, on our grounds, and there would be some responsibility for us to maintain and upkeep for, for that item going forward. And discussion also centered around, by doing this, or if we approve this, that opens the door then, because we haven't really done this in the past, it opens the door to us considering and probably having to accept other groups or organizations that want to put artwork on our ground. There, there was concern about, about that precedent. There was some discussion about the fact that we've accepted memorial benches in the past, or memorial trees, and I think the difference there, and a critical difference, is that a bench, and even a tree, has some functional value to it, and a bench in particular can be easily moved someplace else. The item that we're considering here is eight feet tall, sheet metal, that would have like a cement base and have to be bolted down. So it's, it's more artistic as opposed to functional, and it's not really, again, I think that's a lot of what the discussion had was, was around that. I, I, I sort, I understand Debbie's point about maybe tabling a vote on this item specifically until we have a clearer sense of the policies, and if we want to change the policy that governs this item. But I think that the folks who've been advocating for this deserve some kind of response, yes or no, but just a clear response of whether or not this is something that's even gonna be a possibility for their activities that they're scheduling. That's my perspective.
Yeah, I, I have two questions, and one is, who will be paying for the, the concrete base that this is going to be on? And two, what about maintenance costs in, as we go into the future?
So the, the folk that are donating have said that they will bear the cost of all the installation, so I would imagine that covers the base that you're talking about. As to maintenance, we haven't discussed it. I'm not sure how much maintenance there would be. Frankly, when something happens like the bench or the tree, and Mr. Antonio's discussion, if a tree was donated and a lightning hits it and destroys the tree, we do not replace the tree. I suppose we would contact the alumni group and/or the sculptor and ask them if they would like to fix the sculpture. I don't think that would be something that the district would be taking on if there was a donation acceptance.
If I could, my, my concern about that is, in reading the existing policy, we in fact are responsible for maintenance going forward. And so again, given that we don't have a precedent for something of this expense even, that would be part of our burden as a district and the taxpayers. And again, given there's no precedent for it, I, I think that we really need to look at that policy. And again, just in terms of what Joe was saying, it is an aesthetic, and I don't think that the school board should be arbiters of decisions regarding, you know, what's artistic, what's not attractive, what is attractive. And it's not so much the number of people who would want to donate, it's that once we accept a donation, are we gonna be, or will future boards be, the arbiters are saying, well, that, that next statue is offensive. Certainly, there's nothing offensive in this statue. Personally, I don't see anything offensive. But again, going forward, there certainly could be something that's presented, which could be an offense to members of the public. So again, I, I think our policy is way too wide open for concerns going forward.
So I apologize. Debbie, I think you were asking for a motion. So I should have asked if someone wants to second that motion.
I'll second.
Second. Before we vote on that, so I'll take any other comments. I know David, I think, Pat.
I, it's my understanding that if there's a motion to table, there is no discussion and you vote. Isn't that correct?
Is that right? Okay.
I don't want to vote till I hear more about the policy.
Okay. Am I, are we barred from having discussion? Yeah, because I know David and Pat, I think. Tracy, okay.
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm not opposed to the discussion, that's just not what I'm familiar with, so it's up to you guys.
Well, I, well, I, I will allow comments from board members who I know have been pumping at the bit to say something, so.
As far as press.
Sorry, Ron, I think, David's been waiting patiently.
All right. Well, no, I'm, I'm satisfied that the existing policy is specific enough and vague enough to allow us to make decisions one at a time as they come up. I'm not concerned that the maintenance, this particular, as it's described, is gonna be an expense at all. I think we can stipulate, if it's not already agreed, that the maintenance could be provided as part of the installation. I, I know they've already agreed to provide the base and, and the installation itself, and I presume we have to sign off on the actual installation as being safe. I know the eight-foot size of the thing sounds big, but if it's out in a courtyard as a sort of central feature, I, I don't see it as being overwhelmingly or intimidatingly large. I, I have no objection to voting on it tonight. I, I have no objection to voting on it tonight to accept the donation. That's my feeling.
Thanks, Pat.
I don't think I'm exactly chomping at the bit, but I do feel like we are about to set a precedent. If we accept this particular donation, I think the policy is vague and that the guidelines are nonexistent. I think it's great that Wissahican alumni are interested in contributing to the district. And I think if we can set up a series of, and I don't mean to be, you know, guidelines must be strict, but to have some set of guidelines for how the Wissahican alumni can best contribute, I think that's important. And one of the things I think about is maybe we need a wall where people can contribute, either alumni groups or individuals to, to commemorate the contributions of people who are alumni of the districts. And that would be something, I guess I would say, if we're going to table this in order to set a policy discussion about it, that would be something I think would be appropriate so that future groups, when they want to make a contribution to the school, can do that, can memorialize or honor some of the members of their class and also make a financial contribution to the district.
Sorry, Ron, Tracy, I think, one, two.
So I was thinking about what David was saying, and if this was something that we accepted, then I would think that we could put something in there saying that we would not be responsible for future maintenance. Would that be something that could be done?
Sorry, I apologize. You can have a stipulation, if you accept the gift, that the district is not responsible.
Now, Ron.
Yeah. Because of the vagueness and the specificity, I thought I could say that, at the same time, I would say let us accept this and then refer to the Policy Committee so that they can tighten up the, the rules in this, so that, set up a mini art commission to decide which contributions can be accepted or not. But as far as this item, I think this item should be accepted. All the, the questions and concerns that I had both last week and this week seem to be, have been answered. So I think for that reason, we should accept this, this piece of art commemorating students from our school.
And I know last week, Ally, I think, was going to talk to art department or art teacher about their thoughts on the placement of this art installation.
Yes, I did. I talked to the two art teachers in that area with the art courtyard about the placement of the art. Neither of them had any very strong opinion about it, but both of them did say something similar to what was mentioned earlier about maybe alternative ways of honoring alumni, just based on the, that courtyard proceeds and its actual purpose in terms of not only honoring alumni, but helping especially enter art.
So any, any other comments before you move on the, that table? Okay, so Debbie had, just to clarify, Debbie had a motion to table this item for a later vote pending a review of the policies that govern this item. It was seconded, and we've had some additional comments. So now it is time to vote. I think what we'll do is do a roll call vote. This is the table, so you say yes if you want to table this item from voting tonight, that not going to vote on it, no if you don't want to table the item. Okay? Is that clear?
Mr. Badger?
Yes.
Mrs. David?
Yes.
Mrs. Di Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
No.
Ms. Greenstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayman?
Yes.
Mr. Stoloff?
No.
Mrs. Walsh?
No.
Mr. Antonio?
No.
Five yes, four no.
Okay, so facing the vote, that, that this item is, is tabled. All right, well, we have one more item to vote on, somewhat anticlimactic, but it's item 15I5, the list of payments. I have a motion to approve item 15I5.
So moved.
Motion has been approved and seconded. Comments?
Yes, I will be abstaining from this vote due to my employment with one of the vendors. I will submit this abstention in writing.
Okay, so noted. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and now we are at the second public comment period where we'll hear comments about any school-related topics. No additional speakers, then I'll move on to Board Comments. Comments from my fellow board members.
I just wanted to congratulate the teams that won this year. I think it's great that the ice hockey team was extremely excited. I'm not going to say who they played, but six, so it was a very thorough win. But congratulations to, who say it was, Joel, the wrestling? Wrestling and the girls', uh, girls' basketball made it to the playoffs. Wonderful. Thank you.
Aren't some of the boys going on to states in wrestling?
Yeah, I believe it's, there's two, there's two going on.
And I wanted to make a comment on one of the items that we voted on, the large motion. It was one that we talked about last, item 15I3, part of the finance list, and it is an action that is going to get the wheels in motion for us as a district to help the Wissahican Valley Public Library with funding for major renovations to their Amber Library branch. And we discussed it a bit last week, and then it was kind of in blanket vote that we did earlier, but I just wanted to call that out. It's an exciting project that we've heard about before, and I think it'll do some great things for the Amber Library Branch and make it even more of a valuable resource for the community that it serves. And I'm excited that we were able to get through the logistical, the legal, and the financial and inertia kind of hurdles to make this happen. So congratulations to the library, looking forward.
I too would like to congratulate the Ms. Frank and the, I presume, the other members of the library staff, and I'm glad that I, I had a part in it, in getting you this, even if it was only one ninth of, of the vote. But I'm glad we can do it. But again, you guys were nagging that loan and we'll, we got your libraries.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? So then with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.